... to the United States of America, to your home, which is safe, our nation, our God, and we deserve to be just as well.
Counsel, that time to review minutes from May 20th to 21st, 2021, ready for meeting under any conditions or restrictions. There are none, the minutes are approved by our commission. Move on to the public hearings. I have an A, the public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget. Second hearing, Mark Barbeau, City Manager will present. Hi, Mark.
Good afternoon, how is everyone? Good. Great, great, great. Again, as my manager stated, this is a second public hearing for our FY '22 budget. The state of Georgia only requires one public hearing. We held that last Thursday, it was a couple hours long, and we discussed the '22 budget in much detail at that point in time. But we also, at this point in time, has been tradition with the City of Austin, we do want to give folks one further opportunity to speak to the budget if they wish so. To do so, so I will present an abbreviated version, and then if there's any fellow that would like to speak to that or have a question, that's be the time to do that. If you recall Thursday, we spent a lot of time talking about capital, infrastructure, things of that nature. So the slide before tonight is giving you an idea of how that capital will be spent next year, what departments. Thirty-nine to forty percent will be in our utilities area, which is not unusual as we have in the past year, that's the tier of our water systems, our storage systems, and all the things that utilities are doing. As you know, we're still under consideration with EPD, so this will take into account those type of projects that have been required by EPD as well. Then we have our fifty percent squined to our engine A projects. And these are our projects like connectivity sidewalks, road improvements, intersection improvements, all of those type of things that are underground, that our citizens can see that we're doing, whereas, you know, the utilities and everything is pretty much underground, and you really don't see what's going on there. And then public works, two percent will go to the public works, and that's some, some of the rubber trucks, things of that nature. Police is one percent, motor pool is below one. And vehicles, you said eight percent, we recall our conversation, that's our systematic replacement of our city vehicles, our city fleet each year, as we rotate those vehicles out. So our overall budget is about one-hundred twenty-seven and a half million dollars, thirty-five million of that is going to be dedicated to capital. And again, we spent a lot of time talking about all the different projects that are, that will be happening in capital. Majority of that, thanks to the citizens of Austin, will be fun to do, squash, explore special purposes, look at your sales tax. Always very grateful for citizens to vote that tax towards to be able to do these capital items. Hey, Tracy? Yeah, we spent a little time talking about general fund, and our local government general fund is what most folks focus on. This is where your property taxes are recorded, our sales taxes, this is where police, fire, engineering, you guys, this is where your expenditures are housed. So just a quick backdrop to show you exactly our revenue structure, where our funds come from with the general fund. Other taxes, it's thirty-five and a half percent of everything that's coming in there. Those are things like our franchise fees that utilities companies pay us to use our railways, it's things such as our business occupation tax, that all go into what we call other taxes. Then you see property taxes in the red, in the left corner up here, it's thirty-one percent, and that's the property taxes that our citizens pay on real and personal property that they own. And then the green section a little right, twenty-four percent is sales and use tax, and that's the local option sales tax that we all pay when we purchase goods and items from the different vendors in our community. And other than that, the rest are just, you know, smaller amounts, licenses and permits, percent and a half, charges for services are under, fines and forfeitures, right under three percent. So you can see the major, the three major items are the property taxes, our other taxes, and our local option sales tax.
Counsel, any questions for Mark?
We got another slide.
I don't know. We got another slide.
All right, still the general fund, because that's usually, like I said, the topic of the conversation. And as we discussed Thursday evening, as we discuss every year, when it comes to the operations of the city, general fund included, the overall expense for everybody, the overall expenses, personal services, that's our compensation to employees, and the benefits that accompany those, that compensation. So sixty-nine percent of all of our expenditures in the general fund are personnel services related. That is true of every other fund of the city, in the utilities area, the sanitation area, whatever fund you look at, personal services ranges sixty-nine to seventy percent of that fund for those expenditures. General fund, no different. If you look at the other local governments, we're no different from that. If you compare us to others, you would see that's where that largest amount of dollars goes. Other services and charges, you see thirteen and a half percent, those are things like our IT charges and things of that nature, our, for charges of our fleet are also included in that. Ten percent of this, the brown piece of paper up here, is contractual services, and those are things such as, you know, we have to pay for the streetlights, that's electricity around the streetlights, and some of those contractual type of items there, so that's how much we, this expense. So it's pretty much after, after personal services and with our employees, this, yeah, thirty percent is pretty much just the supplies and the items they need to run the city of Austin, I mean their responsibilities. Yeah, Tracy? Tracy, do you have the financial plan? All right, this is the proposed financial plan, as we discussed Thursday evening, citywide, which includes all the funds of the city. General fund, our capital projects funds, our enterprise, the city. We are estimating total sources of income for the City of Austin the next twelve months, one-hundred twenty-seven and a half million dollars, it was still, don't forget, and total outflows of that, of that same revenue source is one-hundred twenty-four and a half million. So at least the City of Austin overall, just slightly under three million dollars if a profit, if you will, but in a local government world, we say total sources over uses, which is a very slim margin, I'm going to point that out, because that's second column of the general fund. We only have a twenty-six thousand eight hundred fifteen dollar buffer to carry this through next year, so very small margins. It's fairly a continuation budget from what we have done in the past, from year to year. There is a three percent cost of living budget for our employees, no premiums, none of the benefits to our employees, well, anything they may pay. There's no, at the moment, there's no military increase in, built in, because as we discussed Thursday night, once we get the tax digested, if the tax digestion grows enough, and new development has grown that digest enough, there will not be a need for that. So at this moment, there is not a proper tax increase in this budget, because we don't have enough information to make that determination yet. Any questions you may have?
Counsel. All right, this is a public hearing, Mark, would anybody like to speak in favor of this budget? They have the right to come out and speak, either for or against. Good, counsel, I'll now turn the budget over to you to close out that part of the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, take the motion to adopt the budget, yes, please.
Second. The motion is second, all in favor, show hands. Mark, thank you for the great work, moving to your staff. Come here. Well, now, move on to the public hearing portion as well, consideration of the conditional use permit for a self-storage community warehouse facility, it's a community commercial zoning district, as requested by Corner Storage LLC, the property consists of five-point-five-seven acres, it's located at 4036 Peters Road, land condition with EBITDA, and we're looking to favor nine-one, Tracy Dolly, her's on court interim, how does that, Tracy, how you doing?
I'm fine. Good evening.
Good evening.
This case in front of you, the first of several other cases that you'll be looking at tonight, is a conditional use permit for mini warehouses at 4036 Peters Road. Most of you are probably familiar with that piece of property, it was formerly, formerly the Win Dixie, it's been vacant for a couple of years or so. There is a smaller building to the ride, that's replacing the former grocery store, that is occupied by an H&R Block and a Chinese restaurant. So the primary building on the property consists of about thirty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-six square feet, is proposed to be converted from former grocery store retail to self-storage, climate-controlled, most of the interior. The applicant, the properties in CC, community commercial, the reason it's in front of you is because mini warehouses, self-storage, is a conditional use in CC, so we can make sure that it's appropriate at that particular location, that neighborhood. The applicant is proposing interior changes, very few exterior changes to the facade, to the elevation, including signage. The applicant is also proposing some outdoor storage, RVs, vehicles, trailers, things of that nature, at the rear of this building. Staff reviewed it as the planning commission at their main meeting. Planning commission sends a, sends a recommendation to approve the application as presented, with four conditions, those four conditions being, a purple shovel grade for self-storage, mini warehouse business in the existing main building only, and with accessory outdoor storage in the side of the backyard areas behind the front wall of this existing main building only. Two, the outdoor storage area shall be enclosed on the sides or rear by the minimum eight-foot-tall privacy fence. The fence portions facing the south and west shall be permanently opaque and solid. The fence portions facing the north and east shall be the permanently opaque and solid or instead have an added mesh string for temporary capacity to allow time for the vegetation to grow and fill in. A landscape strip between the existing pavement edge and the property line shall be planted and maintained along the sides of the outdoor storage area, with landscape connecting system of minimums, small trees and two canic trees for every one hundred linear feet, as approved by the city orders. All trees shall be ambered variety. Number three, outdoor storage items shall be limited only to motor vehicles and customary recreational vehicles such as bugs and campers, and their assisted associated drivers. All outdoor items shall be operative and in good-looking condition and neatly parked at all times. There shall be no heavy tractor equipment or any materials allowed. The last proposed condition, condition, conditional use approval shall expire after three years from the date of approval, if the proposed use has not received an official certificate of occupancy, nontemporary, from the city by the day, by that date. The votes from the planning commission was not.
Counsel, any questions for Tracy?
I do have a question. I should have asked Tuesday, because you might have had the information. Are you aware of the occupancy rates of the other sports facilities that are in the Austin Land County, that people have access to?
That I'm not, I'm sorry.
Just no idea at all? Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have one more question. When you're talking about signage, the only signage we're talking about have uses is the ones on the gates?
At this point in time, the signage permit has been submitted to staff for consideration. They are eligible for wall signage, they, there is a free standing sign, I believe, on property, and any new, most new signage requires a permit, so anything that is submitted better for flattable, dated to man, cordials, any new free standing signage, any new wall signage, those are more important.
Counsel, any further questions? Tracy, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request? Please step up. Please state your name. Your name and your company.
I'm a council member, we're wishing for time tonight. So we, my name is David Vega, this is Perry Song, my partner, we are with Corner Storage, obviously the applicants have heard this building. We both come from a history of self-storage and retail management, we have the experience managing these shopping centers as well as self-storage, we operated a small self-storage facility in Nashville for a couple of years, he's actually currently developing a number of Class A climate-controlled self-storage facilities. This is a property that we have been looking at for quite some time, we've been speaking with the owners over the course of time, about their ability to get this main anchor space leased to a shopping center or grocery tenant, and after kind of contemplating it and running the numbers on our end, we decided to move forward with the self-storage conversion. I expected that we'd be doing a lot of the explaining she did, so she basically all that we are asking for the ability to do outside storage and rear, partially to allow for going on deep parking, and as well as, with our history with shopping centers, there's a lot of dumping that tends to go on, and this shopping center has some tractor-trailers that are parked behind it, so it's kind of dual efforts to prevent the dumping of trash around the rear of the center, and allowing for, you know, preventing this tractor-trailer from parking on rear, and also to give us the advantage of the self-storage.
Counsel, any questions? Brandon?
Yeah, one question that came up on Tuesday was in the front area. We all ever, in the future, possibly build like some retail space in the front parking lot area?
Along the road there?
Yeah, along the road.
So during the first twenty-four months during the lease-up, we would leave that area clear, but I mean, if someone were to come along and have show interest in those front parcels, we would definitely entertain doing some kind of out parcel situation along the road there. Not to chuckle and engineer as far as the utilities and things of that nature, but we would definitely be open to that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Brandon?
Someone asked about occupancy rates in the market, we did get feasibility study done by the industry standard feasibility study provider, and occupancies are generally in the, in the nineties in this market. You've got the universities driver, you've got the airport base, the big driver, and there's not enough climate-controlled storage, at least in this side town.
All right, appreciate it, gentlemen. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this report? Is there anybody that would like to speak out against this request? Now that you have to, please state your name.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Davis of 1001 Cherry Creek Drive here in Austin, and I do own a storage facility here. My concern is that we've got right now twenty-two storage facilities in Austin, Lenins County. I wish that we're running down to the south, that's not exactly what's happening right now. There's a, two, twenty-two facilities, two new facilities being proposed, one of them getting a high-rise facility on the corner of Forest Street and Perimeter, and that would, that was already been approved, it's in the county, but it's in the city, basically, yes, now. My concern is that we're, we're reaching critical saturation, as far as climate-controlled storage, where the new facility opened, and perimeter, and Matt Lees' new facility on North Forty-One, we have to reduce our climate control prices by forty percent to get occupancy into them. So what happens is, is we go to more and more of these facilities, you know, right now, we're down to, I think, three, and then the other, most of them have been bought out by national charities, and a lot of them are doing Delaware trust, where they, that investors have paid four percent, they paid four percent, did it in for three or four years, then they tried to flip, promised them ten or twelve percent on the back end. That won't happen if you're critical saturation, but in ours, so, you know, everything's based on percentage rentals, and we're pretty close with the, that, where this could, you know, start seeing a lot of rent, is when the facilities start becoming empty, you start to see the owners or corporations don't do the maintenance, they don't do the painting, they don't lay tangents in us, they start looking rough, as you have some deteriorators, that's where it's starting to, drug dealers, storage stuff, starting to be meth dealers, meth labs, things like that. So it's, you know, something to look at, a critical saturation. Might be time for more torn, as the city council did, liquor stores and vape shops starting to deteriorate down. You know, a lot of these national charities that are coming in are doing either one-person operations or a C O people operations, running strictly online, and things like that, we have three full-time staffing members in our facilities, it's a small facility, but we know who comes in, we know who leaves, we, you know, we're constantly chatting with the customers on the properties, also ready to maintain a quality operation. You know, the problem is, as your revenues drop, your expenses drop, your expenses stay the same a little bit every year. My property taxes, my property debt has increased by almost six hundred percent since I built the facility. The rent, the utilities go up, the maintenance goes up, the insurance goes up every year, of course, property taxes go up, even when y'all don't have an increase, if they evaluate property thirty, forty percent higher every year, you have thirty or forty percent tax increase. So anyhow, that's my concern, I think we're getting critical saturation, and I really think that we've probably got enough facilities here, you know, and from some of the newer developers I've talked to, I'm hearing forty to sixty percent occupancy. So that's, we do have to work.
Yeah, one question. What, what storage companies?
I have, they have self-storage on Murray Road, I've been in business here in Austin for forty-six years, and we're running tangents along across the street from the new, we're already there. We're in an unusual situation, we are actually in an overlay district that prohibits many storage, so I'm grabbing, grandfathered in, six years ago, seven years ago, I wanted to expand my facility, I brought it across the street, and happy was, I was starting to get it, and expand, because the overlay district prohibits many storage, so I'm limited to the amount of units I have, can't expand or anything, and so that's kind of a grab. There's a lot of overlay, I was surprised that being a freeway department, because they had the actual overlay district, everything inside corner, and then there's some outside corridors extended out that prohibit many storage. So apparently that, some, they were like, it was something that they didn't desire, major thoroughfares, like, or, or, actually, actually, things like that.
Counsel, any other questions? Yeah, thank you. Is there anybody else out there that wants to speak out against this motion? Okay, are we done, counsel? Turn it over to you.
I'd like a motion to deny the request of the second.
That motion? Second. I have a second on that motion. Any other people present? I have a motion in the second, any other discussion? Counsel, now take a vote, show hands on the motion in the second. All in favor?
I have one question, he's not, sorry. Could you repeat that motion?
To deny the request of the second.
Motion to deny in the second, all ahead before me. All in favor of that motion to deny, show hands. Motion carries for three. Counsel, thank you. I would seek consideration of the ordinance for a conditional use permit for a non-vehicle rental business in community commercial zoning district, as requested by Tony Washington, property is located at 1002 Marion Street, along the west side of the street, the planning commission, the leader requested a ten-night vote in favor of. Welcome back, Tracy.
Your second case is another conditional use permit for a car rental business on Marion Street. It's about a hundred fifty-dollar base for sure, the property contains five residential looking, carrying buildings that used to be houses. The property is currently about two-thirds CC, community commercial, and about a third CH, highway commercial. The prop, the specific building that Tony Washington is looking at is in the CC portion. CH allows car rentals by ride, CH allows them by, CC allows them by C P, or conditional use. With his property, his, how the commercial structure built on the CC property, that's why this case is in front of you. As you can see, it's in a community activities center, here's an area which does support commercial uses. The aerial view shows the commercial structures and the community parking on the side of the site, it's entirely built out. The applicant is proposing non-tenant parking spaces for rental cars, and five for customers' employees, subject property, and commercial buildings around this particular piece of property. Planning commission reviewed it at their main meeting, and they sent a recommendation to approve the, to approve the application as presented, with three conditions, first being that the approval shall be granted in the name of the owner, for a non-vehicle rental business for passing their cars or pickup trucks, utilizing only the tenant on-site parking spaces as indicated on the submitted site plan. All rental vehicles shall be neatly parked and kept in good operating condition. Number two, there shall be no temporary structures erected on-site, and there shall be no outdoor storage of any kind anywhere on-site. Any existing outdoor storage on the site shall be removed. All technical cleaning maintenance activities shall be performed off-site, or internally closing buildings on-site, or by a mobile cleaning, sorry, provider. Number three, conditional use approval shall expire after two years from the date of approval, if the necessary business license or proposed use has been requested by that day. The planning commission sends a unanimous recommendation to approve this request.
Counsel, any questions for Tracy?
Mayor, can I just add real quick, I just want to make sure we discussed Tuesday evening, we were the condition about the mobile car wash, and we did put that in there, she said, I just want to make sure everybody heard that we did get that condition in.
One other thing too, I mentioned Tuesday night, it's still this agenda, is we made that motion CC.
Yes, before, so all files for record, they all had to get changed.
All right, again, it's a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request? I thought so. Well, Tracy, state your name.
Tony Washington, I'm the owner, deals with Austin, and I wanted to introduce myself and ask anybody if they had any questions that I can answer.
Counsel. Tony, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak out against this request? See, none here, none, I'll turn it over to counsel for action.
Mayor, how would I make a motion that you approve the request with the conditions as stated?
Anybody? Motion in the second, all in favor, show hands. Good luck. So this one. I would need consideration of the ordinance, three seven, thirty-two point oh six acres from residential professional zoning to like industrial, as requested by England Solar, property is located along the east side of Ulmer Avenue between New State and Mill Highway and South Patterson Street. The meeting recommended, excuse me, Langton Zone, Matt had recommended approval with three conditions, it was an eight-two vote, Tracy Dolly will implement, present. The meeting recommended, the, excuse me, Langit Zone, Matt, and recommended approval with three conditions, it was an eight-two vote, Tracy, I will implement.
You've seen this property earlier this year, when the applicant, the applicant in opinion wanted to request a rezoning for solar panels. Unfortunately, to rezon the property, the care area needed to be changed first to accommodate anyone's, potential anyone's opening. So we saw this earlier this year, and the applicant applied to have a change to an industrial care area. That was approved, which is why the rezoning request from Arkey M. One is in front of you currently. The applicant decided to place a solar array of about twenty-six acres on the property. Um, he did, the property is currently arced, currently wooded, with vegetation. And he is proposing, he's asking for anyone zoning to place a solar array there. This is the order to what he's looking to place for property. And the property is currently undeveloped, there are commercial and there's a mix of commercial and residential around this vacant property. Planning commission reviewed at their main meeting, and they sent a recommendation to approve the request as presented with two conditions, sorry, three conditions. First being that no buildings on site may exceed a thousand square foot in vertical area. Two, all access to the site should be from the northern property line along New State and Mill Highway and towards the southern property line only. Number three, the entire Ulmer Avenue front shall be maintained as an undisturbed landscaping street yard with dense vegetation consisting of mostly evergreen plants. Existing trees and structure will be enhanced that's needed to create an effective turnaround screen and blocking of view into the side interior. Any buildings or structures on the site shall be separated from the Ulmer Avenue front edge by a fence that is at least eight feet tall and covered with a dark material so as to blend in with the street yard vegetation. Such fence shall be located to the east of the landscaping street yard. The planning commission sends their recommendation, eight-two, to approve as represented.
Tracy, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Tracy? Thank you. Again, it's a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request? Please step forward, state your name.
Rudy George Garnett, thirteen, Kelly, Georgia, in the Austin. Uh, we're not asking for an industrial project, it's just we're just trying to meet the standards that we have to meet for the project. And we're going to produce electricity, you mean that? As you, you know it's safe, clean, and everything like that. The question come up about the couch, this is a thirty-year project. We've been doing business with the office since nineteen forty-nine. Uh, you all know Mr. J C Dass in the living. J C the second took over, he's running the company, and J C the third is doing a real good job in the construction end. And J C the fourth starts high school this year. So we're going to be here. So if anyone has any questions about the thirty-year project, or what's going to happen in thirty years, we'll be here. Both you and I will be. I hope he takes me home. George Garnett, G A R N E T T.
Counsel, any questions for George?
George, you sure you don't want to be around the thirty?
I know, I know, I'm serious. I've already been married fifty-six years.
George, is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of this request?
Uh, good evening, my name is Steve Shirell, I'm with England Solar, uh, seven ninety Clean Drive in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, and as I said, England Solar is the developer of this project, um, we've been working, of course, with the Carr family on this. We've done over fifty projects of this nature around the state. And, um, this is part of a Georgia Power Distributed Generation R F P program. Um, so, uh, what that means is this project is going to generate power that will go back on the distribution grid, and we use only, um, so all the, essentially, everything that's here is the same sort of voltage and equipment that you see on a strip mall or a home or whatever, it's distributed voltages, so it's, it's proven, it's safe, and, um, uh, this is, essentially, these projects are what you might consider part of the smart grid of the future. Uh, so you'll probably see some storage added to something like this in the future that will add resiliency and, um, efficiency to the grid long-term. So this is a thirty-year P P A that we're working on under approved Georgia Power Project. And, um, uh, the project as designed will generate about forty thousand dollars in, in property taxes. Uh, does have without putting any kids in school, without cars in the road, or using any local services. As discussed, um, with the staff, uh, in the previous meeting, um, solar is a very good buffer between the residential uses and industrial uses around here, uh, mainly because of the, the very intricate traffic to the sites. Um, there's no noise, um, we've taken, uh, extreme measures to sort of buffer this, uh, with rain screen and, uh, coating on the fence that we've committed to with staff. And so, um, uh, we've also agreed to a number of conditions, uh, that the staff have proposed that severely limits any other development on the sites, or that you heard, a thousand square foot of, uh, building space on the site, which essentially precludes any sort of industrial development in the future without returning to this board, uh, for approval. So, um, you know, really, again, the only reason this is up as an industrial site is because the, the ordinance requires it as such. Um, so, um, I'll also point out that there is, uh, a fairly substantial existing vegetated buffer, but we fully understand and intend to comply with the ordinance as written, which would require us to augment the buffering, and of course, we're adding this, uh, curved fence that will be eight feet tall. The panels are only six feet seven, uh, they're maximum tilt, so it will be, uh, very well-screwn from day one. And, uh, last thing I, as we've, um, if you notice on the site plan, there's a proposed truck route, so we had, um, designed this with, uh, a local, a local firm, a major engineer, Bill Kent, who was, uh, who's here tonight. Um, also allowed for two hundred-foot right-of-way for this proposed truck route, which should give you ample space and appropriate setbacks from that lake that is to the east. Uh, the route allows to tie into either Clay Road or Howard Road, uh, with the, uh, preferred, uh, right-angle intersections and the curve, uh, the road curvature to maintain appropriate speeds. Um, and then this plan, I mean, has been vetted with Pat Collins, the city engineer, who confirmed that this path is both the city and the county's preferred path, as far as how we routed it. And, uh, last, we've also vetted this project with Stan Krantz at the Development Authority. Uh, his opinion was this is a, a, a very big use in this location. So, um, with that, certainly appreciate the time and, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Steve?
Can you say that, something about the truck route, what did you say about that?
So there's a, uh, the, uh, was it the D O T?
Our, 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 truck route to get the, the traffic to down, down.
I'm aware of that, I remember you said.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so, so there was, there's a D O T, a proposed D O T truck route, and so we have, have worked with, uh, um, s, uh, the city engineer and a local engineering firm and the Development Authority.
But we still haven't really actually documented that's going to be the truck route, correct?
Correct, the.
I hope you make sure we got that understood.
Absolutely, absolutely, and obviously, that is a, from my understanding, it's a three to five-year plan. And, uh, I also, um, from our conversations with the city engineer, uh, understand that that is, the path that we've chosen is the preferred path, and, and I think there's not a lot of good optionality, particularly as it relates to, um, maintaining the right angles with the adjacent streets, and it also gives you, uh, access to both Howard and Clay, uh, where, so there's, there's not, um, um, a lot of alternatives. But you're absolutely right, it's.
I'm not objecting to what you're saying, as you came in earlier, it's a lot of African-Americans that live in there.
Understood.
And, and that's what I'm wanting to understand, we are not going to destroy where our people have walked their homes and paid for them, for a truck route to come through there and, and take, you know, and no, they can't sleep at night and check the value of their homes now, also. That's probably the issue with these things on the coast.
And, and we are certainly, uh, cognizant of that, and really, the focus of our conversations with staff have been to protect the angle of the corridor with, uh, appropriate buffering, and we have a hundred-foot, uh, vegetative buffer, and we have a fence with a screen on it so that it won't be seen. And now, uh, several projects are extremely quiet, uh, you're going to have to be standing next to the murders to hear. There's no traffic inside, we cut the grass once a month, and we have one annual visit per year to do maintenance. Not, you're talking about each of those occurrences of two guys showing up and pickup truck to, uh, you know, when they're coming in from an, an access point that is not along Ulmer Avenue. So, uh, so that's the conditions that we have agreed to, and, uh, you know, we're, again, what I understand, concerned, solar's different. It's, uh, the example I always gave is, if this has been a residential development, and someone came in, we're getting some house with swimming pools, swimming pools will be infinitely more dangerous than a solar park would be. And, uh, from a traffic perspective, the same thing, this is going to be, this is going to, once this thing's up there, it's not going to function any different than what's going on there now, which has some amount of grass about once a month right now in the property. So, um, but certainly appreciate the sentiment, and we, we want to be good neighbors, we expect to be back, and, 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 and when the, if the city, the city council or, 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 the staff says, uh, fix this, then, then that's what we do, we have a good track for it, we, we neighbors.
Counsel, any other questions for Steve?
How, how long are you, are you going to take, or do that develop?
Uh, the construction process takes about, uh, about two months.
Two months?
Two months, that's correct, and in that time, uh, the, uh, certainly, like any construction project, there will be, uh, there'll be activity there every day for that period, and probably for the first week of it, it will be loud, but it will be during control periods of the day, so it will be, you know, from eight to five kind of time frame. But once that part is done, it's not very, again, you're talking about guys in pickup trucks, turning wrenches, uh, it's not, uh, heavy construction, uh, the equipment that's on, on site is essentially the forklift, and then guys turning, moving panels and, and, uh.
What did you sit back for, over there, when you, when you?
So the panels are set back a hundred and thirty feet from Ulmer Avenue, a hundred, which will be, remain as a vegetative offer. And that's on the site plan that we presented to, to staff, and, uh, so, and we, I, we, we moved it back further if, if there was, work for this truck route issue, uh, which we then cozy it up to, to the length as much as is appropriate. But a hundred-foot buffer is, is a pretty substantial vegetative buffer, um, you know, I think in industrial zoning, uh, I think the setback time is more than fifty feet. So, um, but we are, again, very cognizant of the need to, to skirt it and to keep it out of, as a, to remove that visual element out.
Any other questions for Steve, counsel? Steve, thank you, thanks. George, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak out in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to speak out against this request? See, none here, none, counsel, turn it over to the refraction.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we approve this, uh, of, 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 recommendation and agreement.
Second. Have a motion in the second, all in favor, show hands. You have a, this, counsel, thank you. Move on to item three. Item E, consideration of the ordinance for rezoning forty-seven point three-three acres from single-family residential zoning and environmental resource. Res zoning to single-family residential zoning is requested by Scott Dowdy, and they have the North Booty Investments LLC. Property is located along the east side of J C Shag Road, south of the Interferer Road. The planning commission reviewed this request at their main meeting, recommended for approval, ten nothing, with no conditions, I believe. Tracy?
The next rezoning is from Scott Dowdy. It is property just to the south of J C Shag intersection with Interferer Road. It is a total of about forty-seven acres, that about twenty-six and a half acres are our ten, about twenty-one sixty-five acres are the garden, which is our environmental resource center. It's an established residential care area, currently wooded and developed. And the applicant is proposing to ask for rezoning R six for single-family residences. This is currently a conceptual subdivision layout, not recorded, not officially, but showing what the subdivision might look like. The property is, as proposed, shows about a hundred and thirty-two lots with affiliated streets. Property is currently vacant, as is a substantial amount of property in this immediate area. The applicant is asking for R six for a single-family residence. The planning commission reviewed it at their main meeting and sends a unanimous vote to recommend approval. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Tracy, have a listen. Tracy, thank you. Again, a public hearing, would anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Please state your name, Bill.
My name is Bill Kent, I'm innovative engineering, twenty-two fourteen, Mount Patterson Street. Uh, I will be a project engineer on the project, uh, Mr. Mr. Dowdy is in the audience, and, and he can answer some questions. He purchased this property, it's, it's, he sees a need for, uh, single-family residential, especially in this part of town. There is a shortage inside the city limits, uh, for new construction. Uh, he's looking to model this development somewhat like the Zion Heights development over on, uh, Mount Zion Church Road. Um, the, 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 I, I heard there were some questions about the, the type or size of houses he's looking at. He hasn't developed any restricted covenants or anything yet, but right now, again, modeling after that, other subdivision he's looking at in the neighborhood of sixteen hundred fifty to eighteen hundred fifty square feet, stick-built, shingle-roof, uh, type homes. Um, we, of course, know that we will have to comply with all land development standards as far as the, uh, configuration, utilities, stormwater, uh, landscaping, et cetera, so really, very answering any questions we have.
Counsel, any questions for Bill?
I just want to ask my question. I look at the layout of the plan that you have, and I understand it's not the actual plan, the layout that you're calling.
Correct.
Do you have the idea of how much or how far you're going to deviate from that plan?
I don't suspect it would be very much deviation from there. You can see from the site plan, there are some areas outside of the wetlands that could possibly be available for development, but we also have to manage our stormwater, so we've kind of left some buffer in there for, for those stormwater areas. So just looking at the, the lay of the, uh, area, if not that layout, it, it should be pretty close.
That's not the house, is only, no, the problem, right? So I don't, that's not that, that's, that's, okay. Yep, that's, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for Bill? Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody that else that would like to speak out in favor of this request? Please state your name.
My name is Jack, my name is also known as Martin Patterson. I'm a cool state attorney here in town, I'm not here representing Mr. Dowdy tonight, but I'm here in Martin Patterson government offering a brief comment from my experience with the permanent developments, opposed to being long as a house is for him. Uh, he's done several developments in the here county that I've worked on, uh, Old Bay subdivision, Patriots Point subdivision. He's built a lot of houses for military service members, I've found one to be very high quality, have been out to the subdivisions, and each is very clean. Construction's been really nice, and I found Scott to be a very honest person, that's all I've known, exactly what he's hoping to do.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak out in favor of this request? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? See, none in the hearing, none, counsel, turn it over to you for action.
Yes, sir, I'd like a question, we approve this request as asked, sir.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor, show hands. Counsel, thank you, you have a, Scott, good luck. Scott, good luck. All right, item, consideration of an ordinance to resell three acres from single-family residential and highway commercial, uh, two highway commercial, uh, CH zoning is requested by Race Track Petroleum. Property is located at eighteen eleven Prior Hill Road. Planning commission reviewed this request at their main regular meeting, recommended for approval, ten nothing, has no conditions at all.
You're going to say the same property?
You're going to have to pull that back.
You're going to say the same property twice, once for a rezoning request, once for annexation request. The case in front of you is the rezoning request first. The applicant is proposing to bring this property into the county. It's currently zone R twenty-four in the county. The applicant would like to demolish the existing convenience store truck stop and replace it with a new updated convenience store truck stop and like this apartment one property to incorporate or develop this site. So he is proposing to rezonate on R group one county to highway commercial city. The next case that you will see is the annexation case. The property is eligible for highway commercial zoning. It's in the community activity center character area. This particular piece of property is largely undeveloped. And you see the, the site plan as proposed, properties combined, parcels combined with the proposed truck stop, convenience store on it. It is currently vacant and has some varied uses around it, some vacant properties, some commercial properties as well, largely commercial area. And again, this is the rezoning. The planning commission reviewed it at their May twenty-fourth meeting, um, with the comprehensive plan and sends a recommendation for approval that was unanimous in this area.
Council, any questions for Tracy on this rezoning request? Tracy, is there anybody out there would like to speak in favor of this request? Welcome back, Jack.
Thank you. Uh, Jack Langdale, seven oh one North Patterson. I'm here on behalf of Race Track. If it's okay, I will address the annexation and rezoning of ones.
Just consider those, would you like?
Yes. Yes, great. Uh, Race Track has the property where the city code is currently located under contract. It wants to purchase that property, as Tracy just explained, wants to demolish the existing building, build a new foundation, service station, truck stop. Really doing the same things to the old, it just wants a new facility with the same uses. A portion of the property on the north side is currently in the county. We want to bring that portion of the property that's in the county into the city. We don't want to change the uses of what's currently happening in the city. We just want to bring the county's property in on the same foot, bring it to more of all in the city that I asked for before we get permitted and to stroke the new facility. I'm excited to represent Race Track. I drive by this facility a lot and I've been to plenty of Race Tracks, they do a great job. Uh, so me, I'll be with us tonight. I'm going to introduce him just then. He's going to go through a presentation, tell you a little bit about the company he worked for and what the facility would look like. I wanted to respond to a question that I got from Tracy. She said, the question was asked about the grayhound bus facility. And to be perfectly honest, we didn't realize that the grayhound bus facility dropped off there. It wasn't a share for the race track until you guys asked the question. So thank you for asking the question. Uh, participated in a few conversations with the race track and what they said is, well, they've never had a convenience store that had a grayhound bus facility, but they also said, the idea of people being dropped off there, they might become customers. So it's, it's not something they've done before, had their story, but it's definitely something they're going to do. In the process of learning a little more about what is in the lease and exactly what's grayhound bus. So I'll have an answer to that question. I do thank you for asking the question, so it's something that is not yet discussed. Before I introduce Mr. Strahlee, is there any questions yet?
I'll back on the bus station. You said that you're going to look into it some kind of way, you're going to, they can pull that in, into their facility some kind of way? Because people are standing out there in the rain. They're arguing on the bus at times. So is there any kind of way you can look into that to then add that into that facility? When they revamp that building?
So I understand the question, is they are willing to continue to use the grayhound bus facility? Do you want to make sure that they would be allowed to be out of the weather and in the store? Don't know how to answer that.
I'm just actually looking to it, that's all I was asking.
Well, yes, ma'am. I'm certain that I'd be happy to continue to look at it. I hate to put any kind of condition on it, so I'm certain of looking at it.
Reason I ask, there's a quite a few people, don't you see, Stacey and I, when the buses come in, departure and, and, and unload it? There's a lot of people going in and out of that facilities. They use the store now, I think the store is where they go in and stand around until the bus come and in and out of the bus, uh, leaving, et cetera. You see people going back and forth with their luggage and et cetera. That's what I'm asking the question because I see it myself. They have, or one or two buses get there every day.
I would think if, I would think if you planned to have people coming and going at us, you would definitely need to make some accommodation for everybody here. So I think that's a very good point.
Thank you.
Did you think that?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Please. Any other questions for Jack?
Thank you. And this is Sumi Ali.
Yeah, please.
Sumi Ali, two hundred Gallagher Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to go ahead and explain, um, the development that we're bringing here and tell you guys a little bit about our company, Race Track. Um, so Race Track is located in Fettler, Atlanta, Georgia. We have over five hundred and fifty different store builder types located in the southeast of eight different states. Uh, we do, and are now going into truck and diesel, uh, capable buildings, which we are showing here for the Wild House Travel Center. Uh, we offer fresh food and beverages, pizza, um, coffee sandwiches, chicken tenders, uh, frozen yogurt, all throughout our, throughout our stores. We provide a clean and organized experience for all of our customers, um, as well as safe and well-kept environment. Uh, community contributions, each of our development group, twenty to twenty-five, uh, corporate jobs that do provide full-time benefits to all our new employees, as well as, uh, four to thirteen million dollar, um, real estate investment, which this one being on the much higher end of that spectrum. Um, I wanted to go ahead and show you guys some different elevations and site plans, uh, just to give you guys an idea of what this development will look like. So this is the overall site plan. Uh, some of what you guys saw from Tracy's report has been slightly adjusted to accommodate G Dot's comment about driveways, but overall the site layout is primarily the same. Here's an example elevation of the front and rear elevation of our building. As you can tell, we put a lot of detail and effort into the way our buildings look and we do a lot of upkeeping every year in the yearly maintenance. Here's an example of the building rendering, uh, with an outdoor seating patio. We have twenty seats in this given elevation, um, which does have a covered patio for any potential, um, grayhound bus.
Yes, that's the hard question.
Um, and here is the last slide, our canopy elevation spread by the blue fascia. Um, you guys have any other questions for us?
Absolutely. Any questions?
No, you can say it. I'm Booster Trunkin and I've been to Race Track and I've seen your facilities. They are clean, they are nice, and the tractors love them. So you just maybe had where I saw this. Oh, I'm sorry. My house was way sure I saw it. So, um, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you guys. On you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak out in favor of this request? Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none in the hearing, now I'll turn it over to the council for action on the rezoning for this request.
May I?
You may.
So we just, I make a motion to reapprove this request. Yes, sir.
Second. The motion to the second, any further comments? All in favor, show hands. You have this. Get rebuilt and the re, the annexation, that's a winner. All right, item G, consideration of an ordinance to annex the three acres of, in Lincoln, the city, uh, you've already presented on that, correct? So I'll let...
We didn't come back.
No, no, it's due separately.
Due separately.
Due separately. What did you do?
Okay.
You'll get them both, please. It's good. All right, you presented on both.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Tracy?
On the annexation?
On the annexation portion, any questions for Tracy?
The reason you're having an annex is because of the travel of that.
Yes, sir.
And it's a small parcel, like the county's farm, you have this stuff that's too expensive.
Tracy, thank you. For the annexation, is there anybody that would like to speak out in favor? Again, yes, you did. Anybody would like to speak out in opposition? Seeing none in the hearing, now I'll turn it over to the council for action.
You have to move it.
Oh, hold on, sir. We're going to get this one to do.
May I make a motion that we approve this request as stated, sir?
Go ahead, the second, or the second. Second. Council, any further comments? All in favor, show hands. Thank you, you have this. Thank you, son, you're allowed here to do that. I've got a note on my sheet here. Item H, consideration of an ordinance to proclaim development approval of a mixed-use child daycare and school facility, appropriated to split zone office professional and single-family residential, was requested by Jonathan, which Peter Irving, Ervins, you think the property consists of one point nine zero acres, located at five twelve North Horse Street. Planning commission reviewed this request at their meeting, have seven conditions, but they tend not to approve. Tracy, would you love that?
Thank you. The light phone case is located at five twelve North Horse Street. It is combination, a combination of R six, single-family residential and the office professional. The Ervins are retiring to add on to expand to their preschool daycare school facility. They are proposing a school on the R six program. Schools are a conditional use in R six. A planned development affords them the same, curiously, the same rights as the CP process. So in a way that gets under your consideration. They are proposing to add a school, some part of the currently vacant property. They have an existing daycare for a school currently. The immediate area is a variety of uses, a former plant, a church, residential as well. Planning commission reviewed your request at their main meeting for the planned development and recommend approval with seven conditions. First, the approval shall be granted in the name of the applicant, home for mixed-use child daycare and school facility on property that's split zone, open and single-family residential R six. Majority of the daycare facility shall run on the open portion of the site. Total indoor forest cover area, all buildings on the site shall not exceed sixteen thousand square feet. All new proposed buildings shall be residential in appearance with building materials designed on all sides when existed with residential or institutional style construction. Exterior wall material shall not include any sheet metal, unfinished concrete, or concrete block of the site. The entire perimeter of the site, except Long North Horse Street, shall include a minimum six-foot tall woodshed fence in accordance with Cal D R standards preventing residential district, districts. This perimeter area shall be fully landscaped with a minimum ten-foot wide garden yard with a minimum of five small trees, one can of tree and twenty-foot shrub for a hundred meter feet installed according to Cal D R chapter three twenty-eight, used designs approved by the city orders. Existing trees and shrubs may count towards this landscaping requirement. Number four, all slot lighting shall be directed downward and away from adjacent residential areas. Five, permanent free standing signage at the eastern thorough street access point shall be unled in a limit of two, a maximum of three feet in height and six square feet in area. Six, all other development standards and general building requirements shall be followed as applicable. Seven, from the date of final approval, development shall commence within three years to request permits above the pending development, which usually shall all minutes expire. The planning commission sends a positive recommendation or approval, unanimous, later with the seven conditions. Any question?
Any questions for Tracy? Tracy, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request? Please step forward.
Good evening, my... Good evening, good. I'm John Zerben. We've been in this, uh, a little agency for over twenty years. The building that's being opposed, a, uh, three K school class, two class train. So that, uh, also, so they also will let some of that track on Forest Street, uh, during the day. And, uh, all the, uh, things that have been, that should have done, so that everything has been approved and, and, and any questions for me? I'll be happy to answer.
Council, any questions for Donald?
You could build a little bit of the back property.
Yes, sir. Yes, brother. Back it out.
And you might not be able to go with it. It's the front, uh, front building. Right, you're going to be able to go with it. What is size, size of the property?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Coming in, in central Forest Street, exit of, uh, Air Street.
Right, so what part of that, with, with Martin Street, with, y'all gonna build like their, whatever their parking's gonna be back in the morning?
Probably be a parking lot.
In front, just in front, Tracy?
Yes. Because they have a little lot. You're going to go, uh, through that street.
Any further questions? Donald, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak out in favor of this request?
Yes, sir. Bill Kent, innovative engineering. Um, I'll be the project engineer on this, uh, project. Just a reminder that, uh, this section of, of, uh, city street was closed by, by your board, uh, a few months ago. So they are integrating what was there into their parking lot for the school. And we, we work with the, uh, city engineering staff to, to work on the circulation and other things there. We're to the point now, based on your vote tonight, of moving forward with, uh, construction plans and permits.
Any questions for the... Still, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak out in favor of this request? Anybody that would like to speak out against this request? Seeing none in the hearing, now I turn it over to the council for action.
May I? I would like to make a motion that we approve the request with the conditions they stated.
Second. I have lots of seconds. All in favor, show hands. You have this. Best of luck, Bill. All right, that closes up the public hearing portion of tonight. Item four, ordinances and resolutions, consideration of an ordinance to amend the ordinance for establishing promotional procedures for the Dallas Fire Department versus reading. Our chief, Ryan Batwell, will present it.
Senator, may I, the council, uh, we read through this ordinance thoroughly on Tuesday night, answered some questions. Uh, this was voted on by council when Chief Broom was in office, said it would be an ordinance and it governs the, uh, promotional requirements as well as the process, uh, for promotion within the fire department. At this time, I'm not wishing to change anything as far as the promotion process, but, um, as I stated on Tuesday, the survey city manager did, um, Chief Broom was moved and, uh, revealed that the most popular response was that this ordinance needed to be addressed. So after I was appointed and met with all the employees, I assured them that we would do that, uh, for... So after I was appointed and met with all the employees, I assured them that we would do that for several reasons in which I mentioned on the table. Some of it is language alone to be more inclusive, so we want to be fair and be more inclusive in our promotional process and allow our employees to obtain the requirements. Some of it is language. As I mentioned on Tuesday night, when we addressed the EMT, we talked about master registry certifications. Master registry at any point in time can drop certain license. It does not affect that employee's license as an EMT, whether it be intermediate, advanced, permanent, or basic. So with having national registry language in the ordinance alone, it actually excludes employees that may be an EMT intermediate because master registry decided to draw that level specifically. Also, I mentioned National Fire Protectors Association, every time I'm up here, I mention NFPA, or ISO, or both. So National Fire Protectors Association will change some of their standards, which is going to allow us to amend that ordinance to fall in line with National Fire Protectors Association. So that was, that was the goal. We started on this June 2019, I have a committee assembled, which is mentioned in here, we met again this morning to make sure, again, for, I can't, I don't have any time, we're all on the same page. We also have the national standard that just kind of shows how that falls in line. And we reached out to other organizations, City Ros, basically all of them, Compton County as well as one Robbins, to see how they follow the national standard and how we measure up. So our goal outside of changing just that language to national registry to include also Georgia licensed EMT. The other ones were big changes you went through, so that National Fire Academy class is state delivered. And I use abbreviations for the preparation issue company officers, stretching tactics of additional company operations as well as decision-making for additional company operations. And those things can be dropped at any point in time, National Fire Academy. So what we want to do, instead of continuing to keep that in the requirements, is to do more of that professional development. So our goal is to bring these in line. And then one of the questions, where would we drop and actually drop the state of the fire department, that's absolutely not. Every one of our officers at this time needs NFPA 1021, which is what ISO asks in the pre-survey, so we're able to check the logs, that we're 100% on that. And we're still testing our individuals, or they're taking classes, they're tested through Georgia Fire Department Standards and Training Council, which is the governing agency of testing on the state of Georgia. At the level in which they wish to promote, and one level above. Again, consulted with the committee this morning. The reason we do that, if this individual is promoted to say lieutenant, they've been, they've got the knowledge, skills, and abilities, they meet the job performance requirements for that position and the one above. Because they will act in the above position and the absence of that employee. So that's why I want to make sure that we have that. So I, the only other thing was, the assistant chief, we added the language of deputy chief, just to allow flexibility to be more in line with the city structure. So entertaining any questions that you may have, register to the proposal, the amendment to the ordinance.
Council, any questions for Chief Bowel on this incredibly thorough proposal? Get an amendment to the amendment. Any questions, I'll turn it over to council for.
I guess you see the banner, first reading, first reading. You see the banner.
Just first reading?
Yes.
You want to, you want to be assembled to fight you, do you approve all of this or any recommendation to do?
Absolutely, we've been, we're on the process the whole way through. As chief said, we started a survey at, when Chief Broom decided to go to South Fulton, we did a survey with the NIFire Department to see what are our needs, what are we lacking, what would your desire be? And this was the overriding factor of, it felt about promobility, as far as the promotional process was difficult or could be difficult with some of the wording. And so we, as chief said, we would work in 2019 on that, took our time to make sure we got everything right. And then with the fire standards changing, it just makes sense to, unless incorporate everything at one time and make one change. So I do think it's a good moral poster for our fire department as far as promobility and the aspirations of those fire department personnel.
We're part of that, you know, it was just the first reading, we're not after that?
Yeah, first reading.
Yeah. I'd like to add one thing, and I, for not mentioning part of this process as well, as I have spoken with Chief Broom, and I have talked with Chief Rice, which was the fire chief that hired me, so. I've also kind of got there and put on the direction as well as other sections.
What's chief's, the ex-chief Broom's current, current position would be on that?
Diversity, diversity and inclusion.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, chief, thank you. Alright, we'll move on. Item B, consideration of our request with the Dallas County Airport Authority, approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration to proceed with runway 1735 protection zone land clearing, defense of 1735 asphalt milling and replacement, replacement of parking signage. Change of runway 1836, construction of that is what our corporate will do.
Thank you, mayor, I'm just, I won't be redundant, but this, what you just said, but this is a grant that's offered to our original airport for some runway construction, fencing, land clearing, things of that nature. As you know, as we often repeat, up here when it comes to the airport, we are the administrative for grants. And so we have to have a resolution approved by council on approving the mayor of the city of Dallas to approve the acceptance of this grant. The way this is worked, it is to approve a resolution not to exceed $5,685, and six, $5,685, ten, is how this is worked. Again, because of the different type of stimulus package and plonings that's been offered, there's, it's 100% FAA provided, there's no airport grant, there's no state match, nor, as always, there's no city Dallas penny put into this project. We have answered any questions you may have.
What is there going to be with the ring?
There are going to be two runway, there are going to be some redillings and things, that's going to be the most expensive portion of it, councilman, is to do some redilling on two of the runways. There's some light clearing that needs to be done, and some fencing prepared in additions.
Any further questions, Mark?
Mark, I'll just point out, they've really brought this one through, this goes through, and they get this money. There's going to be an actual time where they shut down the 8,000 foot long runway, so for a very short period of time, and run it on a 5,400 foot runway for a temporary period of time, and that's the actual minimum that Delta can operate on, so.
And that's what we have, that we break down to you in the record.
Yeah, it sure is on 5,400, oh yeah, that's close, yes, we should, yeah.
Alright, fourth question, have you been using these runways much?
Yes.
Yes, definitely we have.
Reason I ask, I see a lot of these flights, but a lot of them, yes, they don't have Delta on them, these other commercial flights also, they're the ones that's kind of doing most of the use of them.
Well, yeah, we have our traditional Delta, the couple flights each day, then we have, we do have quite a bit of private plane departures and maintenance as well. And again, it takes its toll on the runway, you know, the heavy weight, sitting, there's the pavement, so it takes a lot to keep those maintained.
We're back up to four flights, and we're almost back to pre-COVID numbers out there.
So we do thank you.
I love sitting on those planes.
Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to council. Sure. Commercial, through that request is presented. Motion is second, all in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you very much. Move on to item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Council, no objection from you. We're going to take agenda items five A through five K to be considered, I heard consent agenda, no objection, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we talked about these Tuesday night, Ms. Councilwoman Tope, Cody, you asked how many vendors changed, there's 11 bids, nine stayed the same, two changed, total. We opened bids on May 18th of this year, these are generally maintenance contracts, tools, things of that nature, so I'll go through those if you have a question, just stopping. Uh, first one is 44-20-21, this is for annual holes and lubrications that were used out of the maintenance center. This is an annual estimated cost that we use for a past 12-month period. Atkins Petroleum is the lowest profit margin, and we've had them before, this is one of those that changed, and we're comfortable using them, so I will recommend Atkins Petroleum. The next one is bid 45-20-21, this is for auto filters, air filters, things of that that go on the cars, trucks, and equipment. This, again, is an annual contract of renewal options, the current supplier is Parts House, that'll be our recommended vendor. Even though the high use price is a little bit higher for the Parts House, their discount will make up that cost difference in just a couple of months. Some of the filters can run $300, $400 a piece for some of the vehicles, so we'll recommend the Parts House for that. The next one is for plumbing services, this is 46-20-21. All these bids, again, were advertised on the website, sent out in mail, as well as the newspaper. Redder Rigger's our current contractor, they've done good work, for whatever reason, they're the only ones to come in with a bid. Price is basically the same, except they dropped their skilled labor down to $84 an hour, and we'll recommend Redder Rigger. The next one is bid 47-20-21, this is for electrical services, for all the same reasons, Coward Electric is our current contractor. They did go up a little bit on their electrician hourly price from three or four years ago, it's within reason, so we'll recommend Coward Electric. The next one is bid 48-20-21, this is for HVAC services, heating and air conditioning. Again, Waller is a current contractor, they can, that's getting a little bitter again. I think they were last awarded four years ago, prices are the same, and we'll recommend Waller for that. The next one is bid 49-20-21, this is one that will change this year. Uh, this is for fuel contract, the numbers there represent the freight rate for a gallon of gas, diesel, as well as profit margin built in that we pay on the average price in our terminal area, which is all we need mostly. Petroleum Traders is a recommended vendor, we've used them for many years prior to Mansfield, so we will, we expect good service out of those folks. So Petroleum Traders would be recommended. The next one is 50-20-21, this is for the hand drill contract, that is our rate shovels, gloves, eyewears, things of that nature. Again, Whitehead Miller Hardware is our current supplier, it's an annual usage list, price is up a little bit, but everything is calming up. But we get good service out of them, so we'll recommend Miller Hardware for that, or Whitehead. Next one is for janitorial supplies, again, they're used throughout the city. Same thing, Piedmont National's our current supplier, they were a little bitter, their prices are a little bit lower, just again, depends on what our user does on what items throughout the year. So we'll recommend Piedmont National on that one. Uh, the next one is 52-20-21, this is for 20, 30, and 40-year roll-off containers for public works. These are the big containers that they take out to commercial sites or residents, put them out, and we charge them for filling them up, and then we carry them out to landfill for them. Lewis Steel's a little bitter, that's our current contractor. They do good service, their prices are good, well within reason. Uh, the next one is 54-20-21, this is for Retread tires, these are the big trucks, the tires go on the back end of them. Uh, we keep a supply of these out at the warehouse, and we have to get rid of our cores, they put caps back on those so that we can put them on our trucks. Southeastern Commercial Tires are our current supplier, prices right there where we paid like three years ago, so recommend Southeastern Commercial Tires. And the last one is 55-20-21, this is for pest control services. Bayer is our current supplier, he, I guess he likes us for a column, already gives us a really good price, so he actually dropped down a little bit, and we'll recommend Bayer Pest Control for that bid.
That would make a look?
That was it.
Any more, any questions for Greg? Council? That's the consent agenda that you're looking at, items A through K, I'll now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda items five A through five K.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, show of hands. You have us?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll now move on to item L, consideration of agreement for governmental affairs representation to the city of Dallas, our corporate city manager.
Thank you once again, mayor. Uh, the agreement you had before this evening is one with Government Solutions LLC. We have contracted with Government Solutions over the last, sometimes, sometime, right now, and they provide, they represent us at the state. When we originally contracted with them, they represent us in a lot of state committees, they keep Dallas's name at the forefront for any new economic prospects that are happening throughout the state. As we all know, a lot of time the metro communities up in North Georgia get the knock first, but these three gentlemen do a tremendous job of keeping Dallas's name in the mix on everything happening in the state of Georgia. Now, as we first started, it was pretty much at the state level, during the legislature, these guys are working constantly to bring Dallas to the forefront. But recently, they're more on the national level as well, they have a wonderful relationship with Senator Ossoff's office, and they are working hard to provide us a lot of good things that I think are going to come from the senator's office. So they provide a tremendous service, and I won't say this, they never asked for a price increase. Since day one, it's been $4,000 a month. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve the annual contract of $4,000 a month to Government Solutions, have any answering questions?
Council, just my two cents worth, Derek Golden, Derek Matthews, and Scott Maxwell, they work their way to go. Derek Golden is a former speaker of the house, and still gets referred to as the speaker as he walks the halls up there too, so he do a great job of course, and open a large doors course.
Very foreignish connections to tell this.
Mark, thank you. Council, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we approve, I said, we approve, you made your remarks, this is my, uh, city manager, I'm sorry my words went wrong.
I have a motion in the second, all, all in favor, show of hands. You have us, Mark?
I'm sorry, Mr. Golden.
Item six, other matters, consideration of litigation for Dave Smith versus City of Dallas, discussion of resolution of all claims, container or city attorney will present it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, as we discussed today, we reached a agreement with council for Mr. Smith in the case, and tell me who Smith versus City of Dallas, L. This would be approval, if agreed to by you, to enter an settlement agreement, general terms, in exchange for release of all claims against the city and all defendants, as of February 8, 2020. The, Mr. Smith would pay some $350,000 in the creation of citizen.
Any questions for city attorney? Council, thank you, feel thank you. Council, I'll turn it over to you for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration, yes, please, city attorney.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor, show of hands. You have us. We'll now move on to citizens to be heard. Well, now we want the citizens to be heard, it's the portion of the meeting, we ask you to come forward and state your name and address, so we may have that for our record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes, so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It's the council's policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council, they say they have one spokesperson to represent the group, and their comments, again, this will ensure that all have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard this time, please step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Johnson. 3227, San Antonio Circle, Lake Park.
And I would like to say I'd extend a couple of minutes if, if being necessary for Valdosta. The address you use today is very critical and very important and something that you definitely need to hear.
We, we set his time so that he was hanging up, but it was a little long.
All right, well, uh, what we have here is a call on you, brothers and you, please take very seriously. Cause what we are about to go through here now will be some changes that number three is the issue of Valdosta. This is the Economic Appropriation Fund. We are going to act through our attorneys, through you guys, to appeal to the administration for an additional amount of money. You understand that there will be some funding coming down and we also allocate it to the South Side. And what we have here is the Economic Appropriation Fund. We request large demand, two hundred and fifty million dollars plus for the revitalization of the South Side only located in Valdosta, Minnesota, Valdosta, Georgia. The purpose is to restore the dignity of a once thriving community. And this is because forty years ago we constructed a bridge here that killed a many of the black businesses in this city and literally cut the city in half. A community today where forty-two percent of the population earn less than ten thousand dollars annually according to the latest analysis of the statistics taken two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four. And forty percent live a little privately. This is a city that is fifty-one percent to fifty-three percent black. The fund will be, uh, actioned to be distributed over a ten-year period, which means twenty-five million dollars of concern distributed to the year. Of those services, the cost of government body, which the attorney fees, the cost of court will be served, divided will be navigated, controlled and governed. The total activity of the distribution allocated private funds. The purpose is strategic planning of a thriving community. To serve the needs of all the people, not just some of the people, for all the people in all the maintaining families and the legal system that need be in place. If we include the committee formed by the citizens of the South Side. The topic of revitalization, upgrading the existing structures, ease of living, loan systems, which mean a certain need and upgrade of the area such as medical, recreation, educational, job training centers that will not only train, but teach businesses as well. And assets of business of district companies. This is bound to reverse the damage unleashed to the community over the years and exclusion. We stand to raise and if we don't stand, we revoke that six, our attorneys will elaborate on the legal aspects of what we are about to go through. Now, I would like to extend every time and I do not get that.
You said your attorney's been on board on that?
Yes.
How was your attorney, that's our next citizen here?
No, he's not here. He, they, they will be getting adjusted with you guys. If I can just have just a couple more minutes, if, if, if I will. We are standing to raise the issues and we want to see some changes come to this city. And what we're going to be doing is going to actually help the city to a certain degree. It's going to be a lot of disagreement because it's going to be a change in structural power at the very highest levels here. These, these changes need to be done, need to be considered. It's something that we are going to be looking forward to, we're going to work hard to and we are going to stand to raise the issues even here or either someplace in the federal courts. This is something that we are ongoing and view up face to a modest state. Thanks about the change, give it an understanding, thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Look through.
From our prosecutors and perhaps a little court, old cloud of Valdosta, Georgia. For too many years, level have been done to really help and resolve the issues in the underprivileged community here in Valdosta across the nation. Our former president, President Trump signed an executive order, one third nine, that's fifty, which hampered and cut out a lot of the benefits of the oppressed people across America. I'm not going to get into it, but you can find the reference that can find all the line. But what I want to talk about is that President Biden revoked that order, that executive order. And he implemented one thirty-nine, that's fifty-five. And this can be found on the web. There's some money coming down and unlike the C D D G grant, community block grant, everybody familiar with that? We intend to oversee these monies coming into the city, school boards of education and other places under the Biden executive order, one thirty-nine and five. Loud County will receive twenty-two million eight hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Senate of Valdosta will receive sixteen million two hundred and four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. The school board of education will receive according to what I received approximately two point five times the budget. I'm not sure that's the amount of that, but school board not exactly true on that. But we want to put Valdosta, Loud County, and all this, Valdosta, that we will oversee. If necessary, we're going to have attorneys to oversee how these money will be spent. Because urban renewal, city D G grants, et cetera, et cetera. The African-American community did not get their fair share. Too often they system put white contractors over urban renewal. They put a black man there, but really a white guy that was benefiting from it. So we just want fairness. I want you to know that it's nothing that I'm doing and what Mr. Ossoff said, I'm sure he don't want nothing out of that. Except fairness to everybody. He won't reach out one dime in the bin of that company. I would like to also request maybe another minute if I could.
Give me the same forty-five seconds of time, Greg.
Okay, a minute, we're, but anyway, uh, this is for the good of the community. And I close by saying we all might as well get on the ship because sooner or later Valdosta will change. Don't think it's just Valdosta. All the rate, all of the cities are standing before their elected officials as I am standing here today. It's not just me. I'm alone going across, respect the Georgia. We're looking for change. We want help, we need help before they forget the war of this nation. We are entitled to some of the economic tax and I want to be a part of that change. And I hope that you all want to be a part of that change. I'm an angel, if you know, it's my voice. We just want equity and by God's grace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, Greg. Your time's up.
It's to me, I tell you to do that, that's okay.
You just asked.
I tell you to do that.
Give me what you asked.
I tell you to do that, no, I tell you to do that.
Give exactly what you asked.
But it's okay, it's okay, cause at the end.
Citizens, be heard, Greg.
You can do better.
Please state your name. Okay, not necessarily.
Jamie Rice, five oh one, Longview Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I think I'm ready to commend the counsel on something, but, uh, before I do that, I'm really appalled and offended that when you get to the citizens to be heard section, uh, I looked at the counsel several times, several people talking, showing disconcern and not being attentive. And I think it's insulting for folk to sit through a counsel, be able to, to oppress counsel. And the least you can do is listen to them and be attentive to their concern. So, uh, bear that in mind next time when someone gets something. But I want to commend counsel, uh, for taking initiative to implement the, um, public transportation system that you, you, you started, we call it also on demand. We need, we did that eighteen years ago, so it's eighteen years in the making and I want to thank you for the one, uh, but it's needed to be done for this community over these past years. But with that in mind, I, I want us to be mindful that the White House Office of Management and Budget is proposing to change the guidelines for metropolitan status. Right now the guideline states that you have to be a city of fifty thousand to be a metro city. They're going to try to change it to a hundred thousand. And if that is approved, that's going to have a direct effect. The funding that we get for our airport, the funding that we get for economic development, the funding that we get for education and the funding that we get for public transportation. So I, I, uh, 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 request that we contact all of our congressmen, uh, both our special citizens, uh, G M A, U S Council of Mayors, whoever we have to, to make sure that everything is done to keep it like we have it now, that a metropolitan status stays at fifty thousand people and not one hundred thousand as proposed by O M B. If that, if that's done, then that's going to affect us directly because we got to subsidize those programs that I mentioned if we want to keep them. And I don't want to see our property taxes increased by one dime. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time?
Yes, good evening everyone, I'm Pastor Darren Neal, Pastor Christos from Missionary Baptist Church, fourteen oh two East Hill Avenue, President of N double S E P. The reason I'm here tonight is exactly what, uh, Redmond Robinson and, uh, Burr Rhymes spoke about. It's not that monies are coming down the line, they're monies that are here. President Biden has done a great deal of, of work to bring the underserved and privileged, those people that have been forgotten about, uh, to parity integrity. One of the things he did with American Rescue Plan is outline funding that should be given specifically to these people. This money that has come here to the city of Valdosta is to be used to help the underserved, to build up the infrastructure in those areas that are, uh, dilapidated, worn down. And one of the things that raised my eyebrow, and this is not directed to Mr. Barbara and the neighborhood rain and the neighborhood light, but we sat with John Ossoff, when John Ossoff stated the number of monies that was coming down the line. I heard the city manager say, hey, I've already got something to do with that money. Well, that money has specifications attached to it. We cannot use that money to, uh, supplement our budget or let's say supplant. This city has a budget already that's in place. That budget is designed to keep us running. This money that has been sent is to help those people in these areas, especially in census tract areas, uh, in which money just never seems to reach it. We have a history here at Valdosta of overlooking the poor and impoverished. We must, we must admit that. There's mental health treatment here for people who are on the street corners. We're taking them to county line and county lines. There's no, uh, we have children that are homeless right now, that live in hotels, that live in cars that we have just simply overlooked. Their roads in certain sections are tattered. I've been here fifteen, sixteen years and I'll be honest with you, I'm very passionate about this. I don't have to stay here any longer. I've got all the training in the world to go anywhere I want to go, go any city in the world. I came here because the job brought me here. But after I saw the need of the people, I decided to stay and fight. And I'm going to keep fighting. I'm going to be watching, we do have oversight committees. John Ossoff and his team is working with us specifically to make sure these monies go where they are. Biden and John Ossoff, Raphael Warnock specifically spoke of how they undercut, well didn't undercut, they circumvented the middleman. So the money can come from the federal government directly to the city government. But that's where the problem occurs. Because in the sixteen years I've been here, monies have come down to help the underserved and it just sits there. And it either disappears or somehow magically is relocated somewhere else, to be used somewhere else. I've seen monies that were set aside as I go and read these budgets that were set aside in underserved, uh, communities just to fix the roads. Then we look up, man, I just make a minute.
Yeah, they just know that they are.
Then I see that these monies were collectively pushed towards, which are also you ride through talent, there's a bump. I, I, in the sixteen years I've been here, I can tell you what every bump is in impoverished makeup. Nothing gets done. This is an opportunity now where I heard that we were in collusion news tonight. We're all Valdosta's. This money here is now set aside to bring people who never ever seem to get looked at up to speed. Bringing folks that don't ever get the funding they need will help boost this economy, generate money for us so we can all survive. If we were like India right now, India is in a situation where COVID has hit them so bad, ten thousand people died in one day. They don't even have a way to put people in hospitals, they're keeping them in embassies and bodies are stacked outside. So when we said that, well, Valdosta, and guess what? It wouldn't matter your color. And if that happened to us, one day, we're going to be put in a situation where I'm going to have to serve you, you're going to have to serve me and color, race, creed, that's now ain't going to matter. It's just the love of God.
Here, my turn now. We're here to level with your question.
I, I, well, let me ask you a question.
Counselor.
I'm timed up, I have a question.
We'll, we'll follow up when you have the view.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you're a very hard person to follow. We never, that's the reason why we filed a complaint against you because we keep asking to speak to you. I don't have faith that you will talk to me. You are the mayor of Valdosta and we filed a complaint against you because we keep asking to talk to you and you ignore us. I find it hard to believe that you will speak to us.
Let's sit down.
I want to put your notice that I'm going to speak
Put it up whatever you want.
Such stupidly for, for the things that you, the speakers, people who are moved, the committee you selected, that, that, that tolerated you. I'm going to see you still, you say that you said that I paid people to vote and I did. And I mean, sure we did.
Any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? We get an extra minute.
So all these other people have been just talking till they're done and we can't? Aren't we citizens of Valdosta?
Well now move on to the city managers report, our partner. Please issue the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my comments will be brief. The Saturday, uh, this week, uh, food truck, personally sort of food truck Thursday will be next Thursday from five to eight thirty. But as you're aware, if you've seen around town, we do have a, some filming crews in town, uh, filming a movie of out about downtown. Uh, so we're going to move that to the brewery section of the downtown area, uh, over there, uh, next Thursday night. Because we, you don't want to interfere with some of the production that, that's happening, uh, with the movie here in town. Also, um, this weekend is our, uh, Main Street's holding a second Saturday neighbors market. Again, this is where all the various vendors line up around the courthouse square, the old courthouse square. And that takes place from nine AM to one PM. And again, if you haven't been out to take part in that, it's really an event that's truly grown. And, uh, it, it's a very successful, a lot of people, uh, come out and, uh, and participate with those vendors. And, and again, it's just an opportunity to help small business owners to continue to make it. So it's, uh, it's, it's a great event and I invite you to come out if you have not done, uh, so already. Any questions, anybody have anything going on in town?
Counselor. Bart, thank you.
I thank you, Mayor.
Well now move on to counsel comments. Any counsel comments that I, I can start in order a little faster there. Sunny? Sandra?
I just want to say something about the on demand that we have. Maybe because of the fact that we, I've just been listening to call everywhere, everywhere. I think it's been very good, very successful, a lot is going on. The only thing I can say about it is we just don't have enough coverage. We got strong little coverage calling and, uh, I'm just going to say, I guess being in that area right, uh, constituents, I think they want me to come in. But they have, give us a lot of positive feedback going. They just think it's wonderful and, uh, for one thing, you know, we go through this trial here and we're not paying. And I'm telling you right now, the people are asking, if they have to pay their, pay their card, their monthly card, or they keep, keep them there or whatever, they're willing to do it. And they want it and they are asking what can we, can they do to help keep it going and make it successful? But I told you, keep using it and with the time you come to pay two dollars, they, they are willing to do that. And I just want to. to do that, and I just want to say it's been very, very successful. We got a lot of free pickups, but we expect that, but there are nothing that we can't overcome, and we got to overcome it. And I do want to thank everybody for, and I thank our citizens so much for using it. It's something we need, something they are showing that we are very happy that we have, we get, we have.
Mayor, please.
Hi, yes. Mark, please come on, we just took another meeting today.
That's what I was going to say, we were trying to get to work, and we, right before we came up here, we were making the center of Ossoff's office, trying to find some supplemental funding for three new vehicles now, and three new vehicles next year. The staff has been incredibly in working with us. I mean, I don't want to get my hopes up too high, but we're in high hopes that they're going to work with us to give us some supplemental funding to add to it. It's a great problem to have, like you said, councilwoman, it's a good problem to have, but we do ask that you just be patient with us. There are some days we are open with the request, and the seven vehicles, it's difficult, but we're going to get there, we're going to get there.
Did you ask for any answers?
Well, right now, we're just trying to get three new vehicles.
And the way we ask is by extra hours, if it's active. Right now, right now, that 25% right now is being turned away as booked, so we've got to get there, and we will. Then they, they got us? Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Go move, say it.
All the way.
Robson, what do you think about your presentation? How was it accepted? What do you think about tonight's meeting?
Well, the main thing is that they would put on load on the debt, and actually going to occur here, and they can take it lightly if they like, if they want to, but it's something that we've been not taking lightly, because we will be going to carry it forward.
What do you think about the mayor not seeming to give a few minutes?
That was unfair.
That was unfair?
Totally unfair, totally unfair. They know it's unfair, you know, and it's violation of our rights, violation of your rights, when they cut you down, it's probably like a free speech.
Well, one other thing, with all the black councilmen, do you think they should have stood up for us? When I say us, the right to speak, because I've gone to other cities, and the council will say, give him two other men, three minutes. But I didn't see that tonight, so it seems to me that Valdosta is a little different from other of the cities that I've interviewed elected officials at.
Well, let me explain something to you. See, when things are situated the way it is here, you can expect anything, but it's nothing right here, nothing was to go. And I will close by saying that maybe perhaps when we get done, there will be some changes here, but we are going to go all the way with this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Be off, and sneak by here and put these up.
Bring it, let me just. You want to say a few words?
Yeah.
You want to do it in here?
We're doing it.
I want it in here.
Yeah, we're doing it in here.
Pastor Neal. Pastor Neal, what do you think about tonight's meeting, and why are you so compassionate about your points that you was trying to make, in addition to the mayor's not granting a few minutes? I've go to other cities across the state, and they give people other minutes, additional minutes, and mostly it's the councilmen that stand up and grant that. They asking the council, say, yes, we want to give two minutes, three minutes, they didn't do that here tonight. Why do you think this council did from other councils?
Well, I think that this council is not willing to hear the people. Three minutes is not enough to state your claim. We've listened to an hour and a half long meeting, in which four people were given 12 total minutes with additional three minutes. We're talking at least 15 to 17 minutes that was given to four people, citizens that just had something to say. The entire night was given to, to me, an agenda that was already set in place, that it planned to go down, just like it went down, a cookie cutter type meeting, in which no one is supposed to oppose or oppose. I'm here tonight, and I'm very passionate about this issue, because Joe Biden, Senator John Ossoff, Senator Raphael Warnock, they have ensured, made sure that monies would go out to people that are underserved, that have been disenfranchised, folk that have been hurt, the American, or those people that the American dream, this alleged American dream seems to bypass. This is an opportunity now, the door is wide open, and if it does not get, if we don't walk through it, we'll never get through it. The door is open now, where funding can take people who've never been able to receive that dream, that they can get it now. And I'm here to make sure that that money goes where it's supposed to. There are people in our city government right now, let's say specifically the city manager, who has the opportunity to place these monies in different places, and I understand it from, I understand it to be differently. I see that he has an agenda to place money to supplement a budget that's already in place, and to place monies where typically they shouldn't go. This city has already budgeted for the different things that they're trying to do. Maintaining our infrastructure in these census tract areas, these impoverished areas is very important. Bringing these people who, these small businesses that have been pushed aside, that money's there for them, families that are living in cars, families that are living in hotels. We have children that are homeless. This shouldn't be in a system in which we just built an $86 million high school, but can't take a child that's living in a car, and they know about it. That's wrong. There's no other way to say it but wrong, and this money is brought to bring those people out of those holes, and if we do not do that, then we're not the government or the city we say that we are.
Pastor Neal, in addition to being pastor, what other titles do you carry here in the city?
I'm the president of the N double A C P, the Loud County Chapter of N double A C P.
Okay, now, I stated when I was up, and I just want you to give me your opinion. The issue that I addressed here tonight in Valdosta is in Wade Cross, it's across the state of Georgia, it's across the nation. This is nothing that anybody's asking locally, but it is a national and federal movement, am I right?
That's correct. There are cities, there are city governments that are standing up everywhere. We, the people, have reached a point where we're fed up, we're tired of being overlooked, we're tired of being underserved, we're tired of the promises that are broken. There's money in place right now, not yesterday, not coming, there's money in place right now that could help people in a very, very, very mighty way. If we do not take advantage of that, we're going to see the same old status quo occur where monies come down the line, and they're never used where they're supposed to be. Some executive order, some executive decision is done, and money's never reached the black community.
And that includes C D B G grants as well?
C D B G. Joe Biden, in his American Rescue Plan, specifically spelled out four groups of people, not just minorities, he spelled out black people, Latino, American Indian, and Asian, that these four groups have been underserved across the United States, not just this year, not last year, but for decades, for centuries, we've been overlooked, and we built this country. Joe Biden has changed his position to position he held some 40 years ago, he's changed his position, he has redeemed himself. He now wants to go backward and correct those mistakes, and make sure the people, he has identified that the people of this country that I just named have been overlooked. It's something that we ignore, we pretend racism doesn't exist, but there are black people being shot by the police every day, and every day, there's an excuse as to why these people are being shot. There are people right now that are homeless, that people are overlooked. It took Flint, Michigan, years to get fresh drinking water. Why? There are people in Florida that suffered a hurricane three years ago that are still homeless and don't have, when do we as a people correct these mistakes? We've been given money, free money, to correct these things, to build and include, be an inclusive city, why don't we take advantage of it? This is not the time to do the status quo.
Okay, in closing, do you give me permission to publish this to the general public, where the other news media may not publish this?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind me publishing it?
No.
So the people in Valdosta will be educated, because education is the weapon, drugs are the enemy.
Yes.
Thank you very much.